Good morning. We're going to call our meeting to order. It's a frosty October morning in this office. October 22nd at nine o'clock. Sorry, a little levity, never heard anything. The invocation this morning will be led by Pastor Roger Phillips, Beulah Baptist Church, if you'll come up Pastor, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Leota Wilkinson. Commissioner Wilkinson, all rise if you're able to do so.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to gather with these men and women, Lord, all of which you've gifted per service. Lord, you've qualified them and tested them, and, Lord, we thank you for their willingness to accept your call. Lord, thank you that you are aware of us. Father, we acknowledge you to be Creator and Sustainer and Redeemer. And so, Father, for those reasons, we come before you, Lord, asking, making requests, Lord, Father, for your blessing and your guidance and your direction, Lord, that we would use the gifts and talents and skills that you have given to each one of us, Lord, to honor you and to give you glory, but to serve one another. Thank you for these servants, for each one that's here. Lord, pray a blessing that you would guide we are unsuccessful in our efforts to serve you, and we fail. And, Lord, you've forgiven us already, and so, Father, we thank you for that. We ask your blessings on this meeting today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips, and thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. We'll go right into our presentations this morning, and the first one will be done by Commissioner Wilkinson, the proclamation for the Ark of Putnam County 50th Anniversary. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Harvey. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-113, the Ark of Putnam County 50th Anniversary. Whereas the Ark of Putnam County has been a steadfast and essential organization for five decades, providing unwavering support, advocacy, and services to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Putnam County. And whereas since its founding in 1974, the Ark of Putnam County has championed the rights of individuals with disabilities, working tirelessly to promote independence, self-sufficiency, and community integration for the people it serves. And whereas the Ark of Putnam County's programs and services, including life skills training, employment assistance, residential care, and advocacy initiatives, have empowered individuals with disabilities to lead full, dignified, and meaningful lives. And whereas the dedicated staff, volunteers, and community partners of the Ark of Putnam County have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to ensuring that all individuals, regardless of ability, have the opportunity to reach their full potential and enjoy the benefits of living in a supportive and inclusive community. And whereas, over the past 50 years, the Ark of Putnam County has consistently embraced growth and innovation, expanding its services, adopting new technologies, and creating progressive programs that meet the evolving needs of those they serve. And whereas, looking forward to the next 50 years, the Ark of Putnam County remains committed to pioneering new initiatives, advocating for expanded opportunities, and continuing to adapt to the changing landscapes of disability services to ensure that individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities can thrive in every aspect of life. And whereas, the organization will continue to lead the way in promoting greater inclusive, inclusion, self-advocacy, and independence, ensuring that future generations will benefit from its visionary approach and innovative practices. Now, therefore, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 24th as the official start of the Ark of Putnam County's 50th Anniversary celebration, recognizing the extraordinary contributions of the organization over the past 50 years and celebrating its dedication to innovation and growth as it looks forwards to the next 50 years of service and advocacy, done, ordered, and adopted this 22nd day of October 24th. Mr. Chair, I move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing now in all, in favor, signal by the hand, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the Commission and the county for the support over the last 50 years. We are growing, and we're looking forward to the future of the Ark. We are expanding the Whittaker Center, and the sky's the limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll see you again in 50 years. How are you doing? How old will you be in 50 years?
When do you stop counting when you die?
Our next proclamation will be for Veterans Day, and Commissioner Adams has the pleasure and honor of doing that.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-114, declaring November 11th, 2024, as Veterans Day in Putnam County, Florida. Whereas throughout U.S. history, Americans have kept a special, well-deserved place of honor in their hearts for our nation's veterans. And whereas, for more than 70 years, we have set aside each November 11th to recognize the men and women who have so valiantly served our country, first known as Armistice Day in
Commissioners, on the next item. I was informed this morning that we're not ready for that one yet due to the hurricane, so we should be ready by the next meeting on the countywide project update. So we'll go into planning and development.
Was there any minutes this morning to be, or was there just none on the agenda this morning? Okay, just want to make sure we didn't miss it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. All right. So we'll go into our first one, is our Type 1 subdivision, Mount Royal.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. For the record, Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services. This is SPA 2401, the Type 1 subdivision, the Mount Royal Air Park Phase 2 replat. It is a Type 1 subdivision as applied for by Jason Sheffield, as well as several other applicants in the neighborhood. The location is the properties formerly located at 110, 112, 114, and 116 Airport Drive in Crescent City, Florida. They are wanting to reconfigure the lots of their utility area, an approximately 4.43 acre area that is zoned PUD with a future land use of rural residential to create seven utility lots as opposed to four. The residential density requirements are irrelevant due to the fact that no residential development can happen on these properties as in accordance with the planned unit development agreement. The parcel cannot support any residential development, and the placement and development of such buildings are subject to additional buffering and screening and heightened setbacks to prevent disruption of the residential areas that do surround this, as well as the historic Indian mound located in the same block. Here you can see an aerial view of the property. Here is the zoning, the future land use, and the proposed plat. Highlighted, of course, is the seven new lots. The proposed future land use and rezoning, the land affected by the plat are within the rural residential future land use category and are not part of the military operation zone, and the plat adheres to all regulations for its current zoning district, as in accordance with the PUD development order. The request is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with the surrounding zoning and uses, and is consistent with the requirements of the Putnam County Land Development Code. As such, staff recommends approval of the request for the preliminary and final plat approval of the Mount Royal 2 subdivision replat resulting in a seven-lot subdivision section. In their September 11th meeting, the Putnam County Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request for the preliminary and final plat approval for the Mount Royal Phase 2 subdivision replat resulting in a seven-lot subdivision. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? I think we're good. This is a public hearing, so is the applicant here? Would like to speak? Okay, the applicant's not here. Anybody in the audience want to speak in favor or against this application? Please work your way to the podium, in favor or against, going once, twice, three times. That's over then. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve Type 1 subdivision SP 2401.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing now in all, in favor, signal by the hand, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next is our evaluation and appraisal report. This is a first reading, but it does have to be transmitted to Tallahassee, and it'll come back to us, so we'll have public hearings too at that time also.
Good morning, Commissioner. So I don't have a presentation prepared. Mr. Robert Jordan from the Northeast Florida Regional Council is going to take over.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could we just ask a couple of questions before we get started? There wasn't but just a very minor changes in this document that I could see, the underlying document, so if we could maybe just ask a few questions?
We can. I think there was one thing you wanted to add about the BMAP, and then we'll
Well, that's one of my questions.
Okay, go right ahead, then ask the question.
Okay. The first question is on page 73 of the document. It says on A 1.9.3. Let me get to it right quick. Page 73. It basically added language in there that 10% of the units had to be affordable housing in a project. My question is, is affordable housing, I couldn't find it, and it may be in there, but I couldn't find in this document where it had a definition of affordable housing. Because what's affordable to Elon Musk might not be affordable to somebody who lives on a minimum wage. And so, I'd like to know what the definition of affordable housing is, if we're going to have to add it in there that 10% of all subdivision, of all approved developments have to have affordable housing in it.
Yes, sir. Yes. Morning, Robert Jordan, Northeast Florida Regional Council. So that is one of the ER compliance texts that's addressing legislation that allows the Board of County Commissioners to build affordable housing on that 10%. And it's based on the statutory definition, Chapter 420.004, which is based upon area median income is how the affordable housing is defined in statute. So there's a statutory definition of affordable housing that is the basis of that policy, and it's based upon the area median income of the jurisdiction.
And it's on page 59, I think it talks about that.
Okay.
59 of our package.
Commissioner, I'll just add too. So when you talk about area median income and what constitutes affordable housing, there are different levels. So there are different levels based on very low income, low income, moderate income. So sometimes your area median income on very low income might be 60% of the AMI. When you look at lower For example, something that would be considered affordable housing in Duval is certainly not considered affordable housing here.
I realize that we had to put something in there along these lines because of that statute. I just wanted to make sure we weren't shooting ourselves in the foot, but it sounds like that's covered. So if we could move on, Mr. Chairman, to page 185, which is the BMAP discussion that you were talking about earlier. If I understand it correctly, we're in two BMAP areas. We're in the Lower St. John's River and Apewahha Basin BMAP areas. So if that's the case, then shouldn't we have a note in there or something that Edgefield in East Polacko was supposed to meet quite a few of our BMAP? Now, you may not have even been told about this, but when we took Edgefield back a few years ago, we took it over from Water Management, and the deal was, was that should meet all of our BMAP credits in that basin for the foreseeable future. So I'm not so sure that we don't need to put that in this plan somewhere that Edgefield meets those BMAP credits for that basin. I'm assuming that's the Lower St. John's River basin because we're in two basins here.
Yeah.
But so, I just don't want that because that costs the county a lot of money every year to maintain that Edgefield deal that we got from Water Management. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle here, that we were assured that if we took the maintenance over and the ownership of Edgefield, that we would not have to do any BMAP credits for that basin in the foreseeable future. So
I can verify with the, because that was with the Water Management District.
It is.
Yeah, so we can verify with the Water Management District. And then when we send, we will be sending the review. FTP is going to be looking at this list because this is, a lot of these communities are doing the BMAP for the first time with this BMAP list, so they will also be including in the comments before the adoption and second reading.
Well, that's why I think that it's very important that with this, that's listed in this plan, that we have Edgefield, where when they're reviewing it at the state, they don't forget that we had Edgefield, or they didn't know we didn't have, that we had Edgefield, and they would require us to update our BMAP to get additional points for something that we've already covered by taking over this deal from Water Management, this Drain Clean or whatever it is for Water Management. So I think that specifically needs to be listed in here, that our BMAP credit should be met by owning and maintaining the Edgefield project that we received from Water Management or something along those lines. It's going to keep the county from spending a bunch of additional money in the future possibly from having to create more BMAP credits.
So what we can do is I'll add Edgefield, and then there, under the status, I can put the BMAP credit, what you discussed with the BMAP credits, in that status. And that way, it's not just the Edgefield project listed in, but that way, your specific concern is actually listed in the table.
That works for me as long as it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be in the table.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Commissioners have anything that they want to go over? Robert, is there anything you want to share other than the BMAP?
Yes, sir. So just
You had a BMAP in Mount Royal, you said.
There was, and then a couple other local changes I do just want to address since August 27th, when we presented the overall changes that were statutory. We went to the Planning Commission, and there was a recommendation, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the approval, but a Planning Commissioner recommended, I don't know if it was officially part of the recommendation, like the official recommendation, or if it was just an individual Commissioner who recommended it, but they wanted to include the Mount Royal Airport as part of the BMAP project list. And so that has been included, that has been included in the proposed table. And then after the Planning Commission
I don't, that's what I
How would that be a BMAP credit?
Yeah, I don't know what they would be doing there that
Yeah, I don't know how that would be a BMAP credit.
Okay. I don't know if what there was specifically there that would be included. We can take that language out, but
I don't care if it's not going to hurt anything. I don't care if it's in there. I just don't know how an airport would be a BMAP credit, unless there's
I think there was a nutrient project that was there, nutrient reduction project that was listed there, based upon my recollection from the Planning Commission meeting.
Maybe that's what it is, the nutrient ponds up on
Are they using maybe some of their irrigation to irrigate the
Yeah, I think we need
Yeah, some of their sewage.
This is the first transmittal that's going to go to Tallahassee. It has to be there in two days. I think we should get rid of that. We can always come back at a public hearing and talk about it. But I don't see us adding more to the plate than what we need to add.
It's already in there. You say it's already in here?
I added the proposed text after the Planning Commission with that project.
So it's in the copy we have today. So why don't we leave it in there for now, and then you could always, I don't see where it's going to hurt anything if it's not an official credit. The state's going to pick it up or something.
I just don't want to make us tied to something that we shouldn't be tied to.
I don't know that that would be it or not.
Yes, go ahead.
By inclusion, is this going to require that we perform any type of maintenance or have any type of costs associated with?
Not based on my understanding of the statute. I think it's just in the requirements of putting in your BMAP projects, either local or state-based, in the capital improvements element.
So we just replanted seven lots in Mount Royal. And if we put a BMAP in there, what's that going to do? I just don't think I have enough information to make that.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you saying you think you might want to take that portion of it back out before we transmit?
I would.
I don't have a strong opinion either way.
I don't either, as long as it doesn't hurt us. I mean, I'm like you.
We can always put it back in after it comes back at the public hearing that we have if we feel like it doesn't cause it. You know the issues now?
Yeah.
You can address that situation. We just don't have time to address it in length today.
You would have to go through a whole nother motion to put it back in where you could take it out at one time, but you can't just put it right back in because it would have to go back to the state to get reviewed again before you could adopt it. So you're going to put another step. If you take it out, you're going to put another step in there in your approval process.
I do think
Mr. Chairman, the one thing that we noticed over here, we're looking at paperwork, is that shows Putnam County as the lead agency on there. So our only concern is if we're listed as the lead agency on there, what is our obligation moving forward?
I'd say we take it out. We can always put it back in.
I think you can, with minor, with minor changes like that, you can add it after transmittal.
Okay. Well, it might be minor to you, but it might be big to us.
I understand. It might be big in consequences, but in sense, like you're not adding a new policy or new, like new objectives in after transmittal.
A material change that would reset your first and second reading, which I think this is fine to remove it, and then you can always amend your comp plan going forward.
And then there's been additional local changes that were based upon staff recommendations. So just changes with So, uh, just changes with, um, taking in, uh, adding on frontage. It's just, there was some wording in the existing text of the comprehensive plan in rural residential land use category and agricultural land use category. So there was recommendation from the planning staff to just make that wording a little easier to understand. And then, uh, we are also proposing, because you have to have your capital improvements plan as part of, as an appendix, and, uh, there is a fiscal year 2025 capital improvements plan that, uh, planning staff has sent me to add as an appendix to the capital improvements element. It's just, you have to have that attached to it, and it's best to have the most up-to-date version of that. So those have been the changes since the August 27th meeting.
And commissioners, if I may, the capital improvement plan that Robert's speaking of is the capital improvement plan that we've sent to our impact fee study consultant. So we're maintaining consistency between the two projects as well.
So when will those changes be done, so we can, um, sign it and send, transmit it?
Those, with, when voted upon, those, those changes are already, uh.
The ones we talked about today, Robert.
The, the, so the, the ones that the staff has already included is already in there. I could take the BMAP project out. It voted on with the recommendation, and the, the capital improvements plan is already in, the updated capital improvements plan.
You're gonna make reference to the Edgefield project for the BMAP explanation?
And the Edgefield, yeah, and I'll put that into the BMAP as well. And so that's very just easy, once it's voted upon, to put that in. Uh, the plan is, there's gonna be a cover letter that, uh, gonna be sending to the planning staff for signature, and then we will have all of the transmittal package, and we should be able to send it by tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this for transmittal to the state with the changes that were discussed and that he, that Robert just outlined.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Sorry about that. We have to have public comment. So I completely left that one. This is a public hearing, so is anybody in the audience wanting to speak in favor or against this proposal? Please step forward. For or against, going once, twice, three times, that public hearing is closed. We have a proper motion, proper second, no further discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. Uh, is there any public comment on the consent agenda items listed on the packet? Any public comments on consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of that. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, we have approval of consent agenda items A through F.
We have a proper motion for consent agenda items A through F?
I'm sorry, we didn't ask. We had to pull any.
You didn't ask, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Adams, do you have any to pull?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Pickens?
No.
Ms. Wilkinson?
No.
And I have none. So the motion stands for consent agenda items A through F?
Second.
Commissioner Turner seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next on our agenda, codes enforcement fine reduction.
Just ask them, are they here?
I'm going to. Is there anybody in the audience here to represent that case today? Anybody in the audience on this codes enforcement? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
Um, I'm understanding that there's a small tax surplus on this property of $24.49, if I'm correct. Thomas, that's the number you gave me this morning. So, uh, I move that we reduce this fine to, uh, $4,340 minus $24.49 tax surplus anticipated to be reduced from it for a total amount of $4,316.51 if paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, and further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Adams, Zach, any appointments?
No.
Mr. Turner?
None today, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Ms. Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. New business, Melrose Community Association Merry Melrose Christmas Parade. Mr. Suggs, I'm gonna give you that one.
That's just closing that street to do.
That's all. That is. We just seen a motion to approve.
To approve.
The proper motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next item is Parks and Rec Pickleball Shade.
Move approval.
Structure.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Do we need to direct where the money's coming from?
The recommended action includes a recommendation from General Fund Reserve, so if you approve it just as is, then that's where it'll come from.
Yeah, that was the motion.
Okay, good. That was part of the motion. Thank you. Part of the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next item, Parks and Rec Pico Road Boat Ramp Replacement. Mr. Turner, I'm gonna throw this on you.
Ain't no problem. First of all, I'd like to recognize Mr. Minor. Uh, he was an integral part of this, helping us out in this, and, uh, I appreciate it. Uh, so I wanted to give a credit where credit's due. Uh, he helped us out, and he, uh, for just a very quick recap, the board gave away procurement and let us go out and, and do negotiations to try to get this project done, when we didn't get any bids on the project originally. So the current project that, that I'm gonna recommend that we do today is basically a floating dock on both sides made out of aluminum. It's going to be, they're going to remove the existing boards off the dock, and they're going to use some, if not all the poles, and they're gonna extend the poles to where they can use them. With floating docks on the north side, on the south side, they're actually gonna have to add some poles on the south side. Part of this deal is, they're gonna, whatever demo they do, they're gonna put their trash in the parking lot, and Jay's gonna go pick it up with his, uh, grapple truck and haul it to the landfill as part of this deal. So we were able to, uh, to come up with a whole new facility with, with a, a new ramp on the south side, the, the ramp that's currently being used on the north side's in good condition, and we don't have to redo it. Uh, that was one of the recommendations. So the final numbers that we came up with was 169, 700. The, the project was already funded at a level of 140, 100 from general fund, 30 from my discretionary funds, and 10 from Commissioner Pickens's discretionary funds, and I'll pay for the other 30,000 needed today out of discretionary funds, to no additional cost today to get this project done. I just need to have it approved where we can move forward. I do wanna mention that, that he's gonna go out and start his demo work probably within the next couple of weeks and start getting prepared, but these new docks aren't gonna be ready for about six weeks or maybe even eight weeks. So I need everybody to understand that thing's gonna be out of commission for a short period of time, but it already is. It's almost unusable from all the storm damage. It hasn't been repaired previously, and the new storm that just came through went ahead and did it on in. And so, um, with that being in mind, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move approval of this, uh, this project.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion?
I.
I have one.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind. Is there any way we could put signs out there explaining to the public that new ramps are being built and they're on their way? That might help keep the phone calls down. Okay, good. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Minor and Commissioner Turner for coming up with a good resolution. I like the idea of the floating docks. That makes perfectly good sense. Hopefully, they'll weather the storm pretty, you know, better than what we've had there before. So we know we're gonna have storms. I mean, that's just part of where we live. So thank you for doing that.
You know, the good thing about this is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that the way they're gonna put this together and extend the poles and do everything, and the ramps on the boat, there's gonna have a ramp on each side. If in the, the future, the commission wanted to raise the parking lot up a couple of feet or something, it's really not gonna affect the ramps. All they're gonna have to do is just raise the end of the ramps up and hook them to it. So if, if they decided to raise the level and repave that parking lot area, or whatever they wanted to do, this is not gonna prevent them from doing anything they wanna do in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, if I may, sir.
You may.
Um, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to bring it up, and the reason I'm bringing it up is, I have $30,000 left in my, uh, in my fund that, uh, that I wanna put towards a playground at, um, San Mateo Recreation Park. Uh, the same thing we put in East Polack at that park. Uh, the reason I'm bringing it to the board is, I only have 30,000, and they're in the $50,000 neighborhood is how much they cost. So, um.
Can I put 10 on it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll put the other, you'll put 10, I'll put 10 on it.
Okay.
For recreation, right?
That'll be fun, and we can move forward, and I appreciate it.
Do you wanna bring that back on the next agenda, or just?
I don't think we have to.
I won't need to, sir. Procurement will be able, if, the, there's a wrong contract, so you'll be roughly 50,000, which will be a signature of the county administrator and the chairman, and the budget is all from discretionary commissioner dollars, so it's all taken care of.
Good deal. Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, any, at the end of that, is there any public comment on miscellaneous items? Any public comment on miscellaneous items? And going once, twice, three times, we're done. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing this morning, other than to thank the board again for doing that proclamation for the ARC's 50th anniversary. That was, that was special. So thank y'all.
Very good. County Attorney, Mr. Rich Commando.
Nothing today, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Suth, County Administrator?
Uh, yes, sir. Just a couple things. As you know, we've got, uh, our legislative delegation days that are coming up in January. We're not sure of the date yet, but it'll be coming up in January. I bring that up today to let you know that we probably need to start thinking about what our appropriations are going to look like for this coming legislative session. Also, yesterday, I reached out to everybody about the, uh, March 29th, or 28th, 29th, I think it was.
18th.
Or 18th, 29th, something like that. Uh, Rural Days up in Tallahassee. So let's make sure that we get that on our calendar. We've already got rooms reserved, so we're good to go there. You know, we're just, uh, cleaning up after Helene and Milton. Uh, our debris contractor started Sunday, uh, so we'll be working countywide to get the debris picked up as quickly as we can. Getting back to normal here with, uh, catch-up. I know that, uh, I believe, uh, when I spoke to our building official last week, he said that, uh, they had 100-plus permits in the queue from when we were dealing with the hurricanes. So, uh, you know, your staff's doing all they can to catch up, and we're getting, we're getting much better at, in the fishing and that kinda stuff. So just wanna bring up speed that we're back to normal, and, uh, what a great job the command staff did out at DOC. Chairman Harvey, you were, uh, outstanding, having your, your leadership there was, was very prudent as well. So thank you very much for that, and if there's any questions afterwards, please feel free to get with me. Thank you.
I do have a question on the debris removal pickup. A gentleman contacted me from Church about it. I told him to go on the dashboard and fill out his name and address. Is that, is that gonna be a normal thing and, um, that everybody has to do?
Excuse me. Yes, sir. Um, it's, it's, it's there just so we can get an idea. I mean, because I've said it before, picking up debris is like an Easter egg hunt. I think that came from Commissioner Turner. Uh, so this kinda, if somebody has a pile out there, it kinda tells us where those surprises are. Um, so we just ask them to fill it out, cause it makes it more efficient for the debris contractors and haulers to be able to pick up people's debris. Uh, so it is actually normal. Um, I'd like to commend our IT staff on developing that, because when the state call started happening, and how we'd separate debris out of the 67 counties in the state of Florida, Putnam County was the only county in the state that was able to differentiate between, um, Milton and Helene. Uh, debris in the, they saw the maps that our IT folks created, Ms. Brooke created, um, and nobody else had done it. So we were the only county that actually had a plan on how to separate the two storms. That was very, very good, and, and kudos to her and, and Mr. Ritchie and their staff for making that happen. So, um, when Stefan came down the hall to me the other day and told me that, you know, how we, those, those dashboard maps are actually gonna be very, very beneficial. So, um, we couldn't do it without it. But yes, that will be the, the new norm moving forward. It just gives our citizens the opportunity to plug their, their debris in, and it just makes it more efficient for the haulers to be able to come in and get.
What if it's on a private road? We, that, that's been commented.
Well, if it's on a private road, if we normally pick up, uh, the trash there, then yes, we would go down there, but we can't go on private property and pick up a pile. So we would follow the same route that they would take their garbage to.
Okay, good deal. Good deal. Thank you. And I do wanna echo the comments about the dashboard. During the incident, it was up and running, being, being made aware of the needs that were out there. Then it was also used for, uh, damage assessment, and if you clicked on one, you could see the damage and what the potential, um, income impactment there was. So I was really impressed with that, and now we're moving into debris dashboard. Still a wonderful, wonderful tool, and I agree with you. I think it's, it's gonna be a roadmap. It is an Easter egg hunt, but the eggs are gonna be more visible, and you don't have to go searching for them quite so heavily. So, y'all did a great job, Mr. Ritchie, you and Brooke and your staff, and, um, I just wanna say you, hats off to you. So, Mr. Suggs, you got your light on? Nope. You're done? Okay.
I have it on.
All right. Commissioner Comments, Mr. Adams, Zach.
I have one too.
Mr. Turner?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a quick update, very quick, on Dunn's Creek Boat Ramp. We, um, sent that out to get it, um, to get it engineered, and the, they redid the concept, and it wasn't adequate, because they dropped their original concept from, I believe it was 60 parking spaces, down to 39, uh, for boats and trailers. And, uh, and I, I took it upon myself, if it, if I did step out of line, I apologize. I took it upon my, upon myself to say that was not gonna work. So they went and they redesigned it again, and they came back and they got one, a new design that just came in yesterday that actually has 51 parking places for boats and trailers, plus nine single parking places for other vehicles. And it left us a little area there for a future expansion for a, for the, or a bathroom, or whatever the, the county decided to do in the future, and it still had our double boat ramp. So I would like for maybe, this just came in yesterday. I'd really like for us to talk about this one more time and put it on the agenda at the next meeting, if we could, and see. I've already paid out of my discretionary funds. I think I paid 90,000 or somewhere in that area to have this design. And so if we could maybe talk about it one more time before Mr. Alexander takes over, I'd appreciate it, and maybe we could get this moving on forward.
I agree.
Commissioner Turner, I have a question, if that's okay?
You may, Miss Wilkinson.
So we feel confident that we'll be able to have a decent boat ramp there, because I've been hearing people saying, oh, there's not enough space and all of that. So, but I.
There's more land there than there is at the city dock.
I'm aware of the land, but I'm, I guess the, the issue is the, the water, how you get in the water.
Well, there, uh, we have thr- several options, but the original, the option that they have at the present time is they actually moved the ramps up into the property a little bit, which the engineer said would give a certain size boat the required area to be able to back in and turn around. So that was part of the redesign.
Okay.
That they did. But then when they redesigned, they put in, I mean, it was a beautiful design with a lot of additional landscaping and a lot of additional, you know, it was a beautiful deal. The problem was, it was not functional, because you could only park a handful of boats there. So they did take it, and they did redo it and got it kind of a hybrid, and I, we'll get that to everybody. But like I said, it just came in yesterday, so Ms. Young will, I'm sure will get it to everybody between now and the next meeting as part of the packet, to take a look at the new design. But it still has a double boat ramp, and it also has the option to have a third boat ramp on the end where the existing boat ramp is, another single boat ramp if they decided to do it. I need to talk to Mr. Knowles. I haven't had the opportunity yet, but I need to talk to Mr. Knowles, cause it's my understanding he's either going to do the permitting for us on the boat ramp, or he's gonna be knee-deep in it, one or the other. And so, um, I, I, I need to talk to him to find out if we should go ahead and, while we're doing our permit, go ahead and permit that third boat ramp, even though we're only thinking at this present time about putting the double boat ramp in. Those are questions that somebody with a lot more numbers, uh, letters after their name needs to answer than what I have. So I need to talk to Scott about that.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I was, I've just had some questions asked of me, so I wanna.
Well, that was, that was the first issue, was that we couldn't, with the double boat ramp, we couldn't get the boats in there without hitting a bulkhead on the other side, which we didn't realize was there until they went out and did a onsite visit.
Okay.
That's why they moved the boat ramps up into the property enough to where we'd give them the proper turning radius to get boats in there.
Good, good work. Thank you, sir. Is that all you have?
All I have, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, Chairman Harvey. Um, first I was gonna say, um, thank you to all the staff. Minister Suggs, W County Administrator. Suggs, County Administrator, JR Grimes, Julianne, also Public Works, Emergency Services, for everything they did preparing for the hurricane. We did, you know, escape most of the damage that other counties did get, especially down Sal. But I just think we just got a great team, and I just, I appreciate that. I do want to thank Public Works. There was a point Thursday morning that County Road 309, 308, 308B, and Junction Road were all blocked. And within probably four or five hours, you could get through those roads, and they did, really did a great job, so I appreciate that. I hope that staff will definitely pay attention to, I know all projects, but this Pico Boat Ramp, that upgrade, I think is going to be great. I think that boat ramp is used a lot. We are in need of a small floating dock at the Drayton Island Ferry, and so hopefully this will work out and be able to have a model to maybe put a smaller one there so people can access that ramp, because really, you have to pull up too shore to get in and out of your boat. I do see Commissioner-elect Joss Alexander up there, and possibly Commissioner-elect JR Newbold. I just want to remind you that all meetings are not this short and don't go this smoothly.
We're not done yet.
But this has been a good meeting, and I figured I just would mention that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things, I wanted to say thank you to Simon's House and Epicure. They did a food distribution Saturday in Crescent City, and I, from what I understand, I couldn't attend, but what I understand, it went off very well. And I just appreciate those nonprofits for stepping up and trying to help people in our community. And then, also, I wanted to thank our staff during the EOC, during the storm. We had just such a big difference in improved communication and getting the communication out to our citizens. And I was certainly doing my share by trying to share everything I could on social media, but at the same time, I was getting feedback from our citizens that they really appreciated getting the information. So, I think that a lot of work goes behind the scenes, but then, how do we reach our citizens and get them the information? And I think we've certainly improved upon that, and we'll continue to do so as we move forward, so thank you for that. And then, I just wanted to mention that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm surprised nobody asked for a proclamation, but I'm wearing pink, and I see a couple other people wearing pink, and my mother was affected by that, my mother-in-law, my aunt, and so, it's very important to me. And so, just remember that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would really be remiss if I didn't join Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Wilkinson in accolades to the county on what they did on this one. We've had multiple ones over the seven years, and if there's such a thing as one going smooth, maybe it's from the amount of them that we've had or what, but I'm telling you, this was almost amazing. It really was. Not just the amount of time that it took them to get everything open and running again, but how quick things backed to business as usual once it got done. I mean, within, now, this is me looking outside in, but within a week, they were grading roads again. They were, they were back to business as usual. And that, to me, was the most amazing part of the whole thing, is how quick they did what absolutely had to be done, incorporated the rest of it that absolutely had to be done into their normal schedule and went back to working again. To me, that was just an amazing task, so I'll join them, and kudos to you guys.
And also, Chairman Harvey, with the way we have it now, just the chairman goes to the EOC, and it is just an extra effort to make those briefings and things like that. So, I appreciate everything that Larry's done with his leadership this year. And, you know, two hurricanes back-to-back is no fun, but you stepped up to the plays you always do.
Actually, what he missed in the first row...
I knew that was going to come. I was on a cruise, it's not my fault.
That was seven years ago.
It never ends.
No, it doesn't.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have a question?
That's all I have, thank you.
Good, thank you. And, you know, I want to say, since I was there, you know, we are getting better every time we have a storm, no doubt about that. We wish we wouldn't have any storms, that would be wonderful. But we are doing so much better with the information that's being handed down, not only to the commissioners, but to the public. And, you know, yesterday, I was trying to tell somebody about the debris pickup, and I said, I don't need to make a phone call, I can go on the EOC website, Facebook page, pull it off right there, and here's everything you need to know about it. So, I think that's the frustrating part, years ago, was information. But now that we're into this technology phase of our life, and everything is moving in that direction, we can do a lot of things, and we proved that. And we proved that we're a leader in the state with information technology. So, I think our best days are ahead of us, and we're going to continue doing the right thing for the right reasons. It does take a while to ramp up, no doubt, but we can shut down, and that doesn't mean the work ends. And just because we're closed here, there's a whole lot of people from here over there doing the work that they normally would be doing, if not more, over there, and they're doing it laying on a cot, barely sleeping at night, and getting the work done. So, you know, our hats do go off to emergency services and our EM Director and Public Safety Director. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the Sheriff's Department and also the linemen. You know, when you see these parking lots full of lineman trucks from all over the country, you know, coming down here to help us when we have a need, you know, to turn on thousands of people's power, and the amount of time that they did was just incredible. Some of us lost power, I didn't lose power this time, but that doesn't mean I won't the next time, and they'll be out there helping us. So, it's just a big effort, and it does not go unnoticed. And don't, I do want to caution the citizens to think this is not normal. It was our good, it was a good effort, but every storm's different, and every time is different. And some days, we can get to you quickly, and some days, we can't. And that's just how this works. But I think we're, we've got a good team, we've got a good program, and we got good leadership from the top all the way down, and everybody's there rowing in the same direction and moving this county forward.
Mr. Chairman, we call for public comment on miscellaneous items?
We did.
Okay.
All right. Are you, you're done? And I'm, I have one more. The Dirt to Pave for 2023 did not make it out. We had, we were very busy with the hurricanes, so the protest period started on Monday. It'll end on Wednesday, so it'll be coming back on our next agenda, and we'll do Dirt to Pave at that point. We're trying to move those, that's 2023, so we're trying to get that out by the end of the year, and we should be able to do that.
They've already been approved for done, you're just talking about the 23 engineering and the bid package, or...
No, he's talking about the award of the contract. The bids have closed, the intent to award has been issued. We're in the protest period now, so once we complete that, we'll prepare an agenda item, and it'll be at your next meeting.
So, we couldn't approve it today, that if it wasn't, that if the one protested the bid, that they could go on and get started?
Your process recommends that you do not, so no.
Good luck.
But we could call a special meeting, so we'll see about that.
You can't.
You know, and we'll talk about that. So, if there's no further comment, for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.